Thank you for joining us for the regular school board meeting Monday, September 20th, 2021. We are in the Performing Arts Center at the high school. There's a lot of things happening at the high school tonight, but we thought we might have a big crowd. So we wanted to have it in a space that could accommodate everyone. We do have a mask policy. Ask that you please wear your masks. If you have not yet grabbed a card from Sarah to speak to an agenda item, if that is why you are here, please do so. We will read or we will ask speakers up in the order that the cards were received. With that, I did want to say there are six board members here today. We had a board resignation last night. Bill Soderland has sent us a letter of resignation and we are sorry to hear that, but obviously he has very good reasons for doing that. And we thank him for his service and appreciate everything that he's done for us and are excited to work with him as a community member in the future. So just wanted to let you know, we will have a special study session to work through the process for picking a replacement. So that will be coming in the next week or so. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We locate a flag.
It's not a flag.
I apologize. We don't have a flag in here. We do have a flag pole that's outside though, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to face that one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, last call to speak to an agenda item. Please see Sarah and you can fill out a card and get that up here. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do we, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there anything that we would like to call out and discuss or just have a motion to approve the entire consent agenda?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I ask one question about that? The items that were listed as obsolete, do they go on a action or where can people find that information?
It will either be on an online auction or an online sale. We're working through the details of that and Mark could speak to that during his facilities report as well.
Thank you.
Chair Leonard, I just didn't get a chance to say this, but I was down at the district office today and all the bills are in order.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chair Carlson. Last, last warning I gave to speak to the agenda, I did so out of order. So I will ask one more time. We have 21 people signed up here. If you do have a card, you can give that to Sarah. There, excellent. Our first action item is COVID data review with possible amendment for grades nine through 12. The way that this is going to work tonight is that the superintendent will give an update. We will have time for public comment and then we will have board discussion. And then likely after that action, or if there is an action I've taken, we will have a short recess before the rest of the agenda. So with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Gronseth and then after he is done, I will have further instructions for how the public comment is going to go with this large room. I apologize that we're so far back, but apparently if we were in front of those speakers, you would just be bombarded with feedback for like three hours and that would be bad. So.
Thank you, Chair Leonard. There is a copy of the presentation both in your packet and I believe out there as well. I just wanted to start by reviewing the priorities that we held in front of us as we developed the protocols. And that is first and foremost, the health and safety of our students and staff that we wanted to be able to maintain in-person learning and that we want to follow the state and federal guidance. As we developed these, we formed several layers of protocols as directed by the CDC and the Department of Health, which included promoting vaccines. We have weekly testing available for our staff. We have increased ventilation. We're hand washing and respiratory. We're using proper etiquette and teaching those skills. We're using physical distancing of three feet whenever possible. We are asking that both staff and students stay home when they are sick. We are cleaning and disinfecting. We are contact tracing and using quarantine as directed and then isolating when we've had a positive case. We've also continued the tiered busing and as of the last school board meeting, have required universal masking for all K-12 students. The reason we moved to that K-12 masking was because it was recommended by the CDC and the Department of Health as well as local and regional medical community. And we were starting to see increased levels of community transmission. At the last meeting, we had just moved into the substantial rate. Since then, we are now in the high rate. And then all of our surrounding communities are the high rate as well. And as we made this decision last month, we didn't know how many cases we are going to see as we began the school year because we had no way of tracking that. So tonight, we'll look at some of that data. We're really looking at keeping our kids in school because we wouldn't have to quarantine if there were positive cases. And we had seen areas of the country where they had large numbers of students going into quarantine or having to go to distance learning because of the cases they were seeing as they started the school year. And this really did align with the priorities that we set forth at the beginning. So the school board had a lot of discussion last month and set some parameters as they made this decision that the community transmission rate for Niklet County would be at moderate or low and that we didn't have multiple cases within our school community. And there was discussion about more than five per building. So the CDC had given us certain data sets that we should be tracking as we make these decisions on the layers of protocol that we're using. And one of those was the vaccination level. On the graph that I've provided, I believe it says page 87 in the handout, the gray shaded area are what those numbers were for Niklet, La Sure and Blue Earth County when we met last month. On the right side of that first graph, you can see that the vaccination rate has increased over the past month, which tells us that more people are going out and getting vaccinated. The community transmission levels, I already mentioned those, but there they are in numbers. Last month, Niklet County was at 30 cases in the substantial and now it is at 64 new cases and at the high level. These, these data sets were taken last Thursday, so 9, 16, 21, and would represent the seven days prior to that. Looking at the next set of data is the positivity rate. We did have some discussion about this last month, that there's some, some confusion with, with what the positivity rate means. And we talked about that we wouldn't really use that as a, as a priority data set, but we are still tracking it because that is what the CDC recommends. They're looking for a positivity rate of around 5%. And you can see that Niklet, La Sure and Blue Earth are more than twice that rate. The health system capacity, we are still getting reports that our hospitals are quite full and that the Mayo in the last week or so has started moving to virtual visits as much as possible due to the strain that COVID is putting on the medical system and the national shortage of healthcare staff. Looking specifically at our St. Peter schools data on page 89, these numbers were as of this morning. Keep in mind that these numbers are constantly changing. Whenever we get information, whenever we have a reported case, we need to go in and look at the situation. We have to look at the classroom, where they are, who is masking, who is not masking. I say that because our preschool students, one of the, two of the cases that we're working on, were within our early childhood program where masking is not currently mandated. And so we did end up having to quarantine two classrooms from our early childhood center. And we also work closely with MVAD because some of their classrooms are mixed with our building during portions of the day as well. And so my point is, this is continually changing. And I know that these numbers are even different from this morning when I put the new numbers in.
Did they get better? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, it's all right. Some of, some of the current cases rolled off because their 10 days were up. So I think 12 of them have rolled off and I believe we've added three since then. So it's.
Thank you.
Yep. It's, it's meant to capture a moment in time. COVID around the region, I do want to say that we have to take, we have to look at this data for what it is and what it isn't. What we know is what has been reported. And this was a casual survey among superintendents in the region where we, I just asked them for their information. They did share that they had started school a week to a week and a half after we did. And so they haven't been in session as long and that they felt that they didn't have a good handle on the number of cases reported. Also, they are recommending rather than requiring quarantines. So these quarantines only reflect those families that chose to quarantine and not necessarily those who are close contacts. So while it is a source of data, I, I'd use caution in using them as a primary source. So based on, based on what we've learned and what we see in our schools, and I know that all of you have received many emails, I have as well. I've spoken with a lot of parents and I've, I've spoken with staff, I've spoken with teachers and our administrators. And we really feel that it would be in our best interest to continue with our current practices until we see a lower rate of transmission in the community. So we, we do not have a recommendation for change at this time. Thank you. I will say that the principals are here for questions too, if we, if we need them.
Thank you.
They're over there.
Any questions for Superintendent Gronseth at this moment? We have plenty of time for conversation after as well. All right. Hearing none. We will begin the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. I think it's really important that people be able to speak to the school board. And every one of you is here because you care. Everyone who signed to speak has done so because they want to be heard by the board. And we owe each speaker our attention and respect. So everybody did a good job last time, last month. I was really proud of us. You know, you look, you watch the news and you see school board meetings from other communities that maybe just kind of devolve into shouting. And I'm, I'm proud of St. Peter. We can disagree, but we can hear each other and, and we can move on. And I would love for this meeting to continue in that tradition. We do have like 22 speakers, so we will be asking speakers to keep their comments within two minutes, which seems arbitrary and capricious, I know, but when you add that up, that is a long period of time. And so we do want to give everyone an opportunity. And so that's how we're going to do it. Principal Graff will come up and assume his position on his stool over there. He has a blue piece of paper, which is just an agenda, but he will kind of wave that when you have like 30 seconds left. And then last month, he made, he made some motions with his arms at the end of two minutes. But we appreciate that and thank you, Principal Graff, for volunteering again. I'm going to try and call like four people up at a time because this is a large theater and it takes a long time. And no one's accepting an award tonight. And so we'll just kind of have everybody come up and we can queue people along those super comfortable chairs that the board is sitting in. You have similar ones over there. And so hopefully that will help speed up the process between speakers and so we can utilize our time listening, which is, which is what we want to do. And all speakers must observe the district's mask requirement. I don't want to start a fight. I know there's a lot of people here that don't appreciate the mask requirement. We're talking about possible changes to it, but it's a district rule. And there are kids here tonight and we ask kids to follow rules, even if they think those rules are stupid. And I think it's just a good example for everybody to follow the rules. And if the rules change, then the rules change. But I appreciate everyone's observing the mask requirement tonight. So thank you very much. And we'll start with speakers. So Rita Rosbach, you can come up and join the microphone. I think that it's on. We'll find out very quickly. It'll be a little awkward for you, but we'll all enjoy finding out whether that mic is on. Eva, Ryan, Kate, Martins, Brad. Yeah, clearly I set that mic up for me. So if you had ever gone to open mic night, you would know that there is a little.
I have offended open mic.
It's probably good. Not that you wouldn't crush, but there you go. All right.
Thank you. I'm Rita Rosbach and I have two children in our school district. I hate seeing how the issue of masks divide our community. We're all angry and we're frustrated by how COVID-19 has disrupted our lives. We have every right to these feelings, but rather than being angry with each other, can we direct our energy towards keeping our community safe? Arguing about this is counterproductive. We are a wonderful community. My husband and I feel blessed to raise our children here and we think the world of our school district. I'm thankful for all the caring parents that we have here. And I think that everyone in this auditorium wants to protect our children from harm. Right now, this is what protects, is that protection that we have for our children, our teachers? We ask our children to wear seat belts, wear a helmet while riding their bikes and not to text while driving. We do this to keep them safe, even though it may affect their comfort level. Since we last met, a 19-year-old in Mankato had to fight for his life due to COVID. He tested positive for COVID on August 17th and was admitted to the hospital later on August 23rd and remain on his 29th. He not only suffered physically, but mentally as well. He wasn't released from the hospital until September 16th. He might yet have a difficult road to recovery with potential long-term effects still unknown. I think everyone in this auditorium wants to protect our children from his experience. Mount Olive Lutheran School has closed for two weeks due to COVID. They will be closed from September 16th to September 27th. And I think everyone in this auditorium wants to keep this from happening for our children. It's not about sides. It's not about winning. We all win when our children are able to learn and to be with each other in a safe and nurturing environment. The fight is with the virus and not with each other. We need to work together to keep our children and our community safe. Thank you so much for all your doing.
Thank you.
Eva?
Good evening, faculty, students, families and members of the board. My name is Eva Crock and I am a senior here at St. Peter High School. As a senior, I am the captain of the speech team, the senior representative for the National Honor Society, a leader on the theater board and the president of student council. I also participate in the social justice club, project for teens and the achievement and integration leadership team. I am here tonight because I want to share my perspective on the mask mandate and explain why it is imperative that it should stay in place. As I enter my senior year, I am very excited for all the activities and other aspects of school that were able to return to normal. We are able to learn in person, full-time, participate in sports and activities, sit next to each other at the same table, have school dances, have pep fest and learn by working in groups. The only normality of school that has changed is the mask mandate. However, wearing a mask gives us the freedom to participate in all of those activities I just listed. If we take away the mask mandate, those freedoms will vanish. Additionally, the risk of having to go to a hybrid or a distance learning model increases when we take masks out of the equation. Last year, I witnessed what was taken away from the seniors and I do not want that to happen to my peers and classmates. I like going to school five days a week. I like being able to face my classmates and have a conversation with them in class. I like being able to participate in my extracurricular activities. I like pep fest, school dances, prom, sharing a table with my classmates and seeing my friends every day. I think you, as the school board, who makes decisions regarding the well-being of our students, would like your students to be able to do all of those things as well. Our freedom is not being taken away by having to wear a mask. In fact, it is just the opposite. Wearing a mask gives us the freedom to make high school as normal as possible for our students. And so I ask of you tonight, as you cast your votes, to please consider the students of St. Peter and what we want to experience in high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but want to hold our applause no matter who's speaking. Thank you. Ryan?
Hi, I'm Ryan and I'm a freshman at St. Peter High School. I'm here tonight because I heard others might be trying to convince you to get rid of the mask mandate. In fact, I'm skipping a team bonding event because this is so important. Masks help spread, stop the spread of COVID-19. I think it is important to wear masks for those who cannot be vaccinated. Masks will not help us stay in school and other activities. Last year, I did distance learning all year. Thank you to all my teachers who worked so hard to make that happen. I was vaccinated the first day it was available for my age group. As you know, the CDC still recommends all people wear masks indoors, even if you are vaccinated. I do not have a problem wearing a mask, neither do my friends. We know masks keep us safe and keep us in school. Please continue with the mask mandate and help my teachers and other staff enforce the rules so we can feel safe in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to keep this short. Everyone in this room wants kids to be safe. Everyone in this room wants students to be in the classroom. There are two ways to accomplish this: mask and vaccinated. A quarantined student is not in the classroom. Kids under 12 can't be vaccinated yet, although there may be one coming soon. In the meantime, everyone in contact with these kids protects them by masking. Everyone in contact with these kids should be vaccinated. The current surge in cases can only be stopped by masking and vaccinating. If we want our students to enjoy full, open-faced education and socialization, we have to be masked until the pandemic is under control. Cases aren't going to magically drop, but there is a way to get rid of the mask mandate: mask and vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, before, well, you can come up, but I will call the next four. Marsha Stapleton, Sherry Crocker, Sophia Grigsby and Amy Koschak? Apologies.
I kind of felt like I was on the price right there when I got called.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brad. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Brad DeVoss. I come tonight not as a city councilor. I come as a parent first of two St. Peter students, one at the high school who would actually be affected by this change. And I come as a holder second. Current CDC and MDH guidance states that communities of substantial or higher spread, indoor masking is recommended for all individuals regardless of vaccination status. At your last meeting, you saw a parade of local healthcare officials implore you to follow this common sense guidance. The argument to require masking is simple. You are following the healthcare guidance of individuals who have peer-reviewed studies on the effectiveness of masks. And yes, peer-reviewed studies do exist regardless of what others will tell you. If you choose to make masks voluntary, it will divide the schools into two groups: the masked and the unmasked. Embolging will ensue, as, as has occurred in other districts who have attempted it. The unmasked will harass the students and teachers who choose to mask. And if you don't believe this will happen, you aren't paying attention to the news. In the end, this will force many students to go unmasked as well to avoid the harassment and peer pressure. You have a decision tonight to either follow the science or follow the shouters. The only true reason to change your mind about a prior decision tonight is political. You're afraid the shouters will prevent your reelection. But I would like to remind you that there are even more parents in favor of the mask mandate. We don't threaten and shout, but we vote as well. We organized the show up a month ago and we organize again to show up tonight. And we will remember on election day, the candidates who gambled with our kids' lives in an effort to hold their vote on power. Do you want your legacy to be that you put staff and students at risk against the advice of health experts and your own administrators in an effort for reelection? If so, then you should reevaluate your reasons for serving on this board in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Marsha?
Hello, I'm Marsha Stapleton. I was a school board member for St. Peter for six years, from 1986 till 1992. It was the best job I ever hit, but it was a hard job. I also worked at MVAD with Vicki Hager as a school social worker, and that was a hard job. We are talking about hard jobs, hard decisions that all of you have to make. You know, ours back then was, we had to decide if St. Peter and La Sure were prepared for hockey. And that brought about the same crowd here as that. And we also had to decide if guilt by association, if kids were drinking and at a party and other kids were there, were they just as guilty? That brought a huge crowd. But these, what you have now are really life and death decisions. And I just know that you didn't come on the board thinking you were going to do that. You wanted to make a better education. You wanted to get an English curriculum that was good. You wanted to do all the things that parents do for their children. And then COVID came. I just want you to know that after you retire, like I did, and you look back at the job, will you be the ones to say, we did the very best for our children? And I think you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Good evening. My name is Sherry Crocker and I'm actually an occupational health nurse in Mankato. I take care of many healthcare workers that work around the area. And I did send a letter to the board. I hope you had the opportunity to go through the videos and the podcasts. I don't have a lot of time tonight and speaking for two minutes is, is not what I do well. So what I do well is talk to my colleagues and I talk to my colleagues So what I would say is, I wanted to just highlight to some people some really important parts of the email that I sent. The first one is that in Dr. Ulster Holmes' podcast, he talks about how if you look at the deaths from COVID in the last year, September 1, 2020, to September 1, 2021, 20% of all deaths have occurred in the last three weeks. Okay? So that's saying that the Delta variant has changed things. Things are not what they were last year. So I can't stress that more. I updated it today, so I went back and looked at the numbers. That number is actually, in the last four weeks, is now 23%. So in the last four weeks, 23% of deaths have occurred across the US. So I think that is really significant. I did include some articles on masking as well. We have two excellent physicians in Minnesota, Dr. Ulster Holmes and Dr. Poland. We're very lucky to have them. The quote from Dr. Poland, which I think is incredibly important, is, "We are doing a huge experiment with our youth. We are taking the most contagious viral variant, not letting them use masks, and crowding them together to see what happens." And then he goes on to say, "Not one single expert thinks this is a good idea." Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia?
Good evening. My name is Sophia Grigsby, and I am a junior at St. Peter High School. I am speaking as a junior representative for the National Honor Society, a member of the student council, a member of the Social Justice Club, and a member of the Achievement and Integration Leadership Team on the importance of the mask mandate. Let me start out by saying how nice it's been to actually be there this year after distance learning last year. Although some parents make the district-wide mask mandate appear to be a huge sacrifice to students, it's not. Masking means that we get to be with our friends and still decrease the chances of having to quarantine. A mask mandate means that we can all go to pep fests, football games, band concerts, and dances. Masking means that we are safer than without them. My peers, students, teachers, and community are safer with masks than without. Masking is what community looks like. Masking is the maturity to know that putting a piece of cloth over part of your face is not a sacrifice but a service to public health. Masking is not having to miss school because of where you sit in class. Masking means that we get to be together, that we get to be together safely. I request that you keep the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, I think Superintendent Gronseth is going to move the mic a little closer. I will announce the next four. If you want to queue up, Bill Weber, Julie Weber, Dawn Selly, and Jeremy Gepper.
Got it? Thanks. Hi, my name is Amy Cusick. I have two students in the St. Peter School District. And so I'm here as a parent, but I'm also here as an educator. I work at higher ed, but I can tell you that some of the things that I saw in distance learning, I also saw in my children when they did distance learning. So I think whether or not you believe that COVID is an issue for children, quarantines are our reality, and if we take the mask mandate away, we will have a lot of students in quarantine. And that means a lot of distance learning and a lot of remote learning. And I can tell you, as an educator, I would wear five of these on my face in order to keep my students with me in a shared physical experience because the learning outcomes are so much higher than when you're trying to teach on Google Meet or Zoom. It's just a much better experience. I think also when students are quarantined, we see their mental health declining. I think we see the parents' mental health declining, and the teachers also struggle because now they're trying to manage whoever's in class, whoever's in quarantine. And we're asking teachers to do everything. And I think at some point, teachers are going to get a little fed up. I know for me, I had to really think, if we were a distance again, can I keep doing this? And I honestly didn't know because it is a poor substitute for real learning. So, thank you, Dr. Gronseth. I think your proposal is fantastic. And I think the teachers of the St. Peter schools are doing such a fantastic job normalizing this and making it a good deal for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, board members, for having us here tonight. Here's a few examples of schools in our area that believe in parents to make decisions in the best interest of their children. Mbed, which is located right here in St. Peter, where Mr. Gronseth is the acting superintendent, they have no mask mandate. Less than a half mile right from where we are right now, my son is having a wonderful experience at J.I. Catholic School. No mask mandate there, no issues. Cleveland, six miles away, no mask mandate. Niklet, New Ulm, Lisur, TCU, Belle Plaine, City East, Waterville, JWP, St. Clair, Lake Crystal, Wasika, Jackson, Fairmont, Blue Earth, Wyndham, Marshall, Redwood, all no mask mandate. Mankato doesn't even have a universal mask mandate. What are we doing? Are we that much more righteous here or virtuous than everyone around us? Is it about the optics? This does not stop virus. Virus is spreading, no matter what. So I think it should be up to parents to make this decision to wear masks. Kids are pulling these things down below their nose all the time. It's because they can't breathe. It's not normal, okay? So let's let these kids have normal gear if they want to. If you want to wear a mask, great. Let's end the charade. This is theater. We've heard it before. Let them smile. Thank you.
Please, hold your applause. Julie?
Hello, my name is Julie Weber. I am an eighth grader at the St. Peter Middle School. I am thanking all for giving me this time to share my opinion. I am speaking tonight because I believe it's very important to listen to students like me. I believe that it should be my choice if I want to wear a mask or not. I would like to share a few things I have gathered at the middle school. First is that I have an experience, won't mask break, except for recess and gym if we aren't outside. I have asked multiple friends, and they have all said that if they want to wear a mask, we should have a choice because we should be supporting everyone's opinions by how we as students learn best. I would also like to add that teachers have spent minutes talking to students about wearing their masks properly, and we have had to stop during lessons and activities just so that they can talk to us about it. Then, that means that we aren't getting a whole amount of time learning about that class. For a lot of students, they have headaches and migraines because of the masks, and that can affect their focus on each class, and then that could possibly interfere with their grades. I would also like to share that the longer you wait to put masks as an option, I believe that the more you'll be seeing students with their masks under their nose because it's already happening. I would love for me, as an individual, to get my last year of middle school the way I thought I would get it when I started my fifth grade year. It would also be very, very sad if I and all the other eighth grade students would not get a normal last year of middle school because I'm sure everyone of you here got one. So I would love one too. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Hello, my name is Dawn Selly, and I am not very good at speeches. I'm more of an impromptu, but I have my notes. I have a junior, a sophomore, and a seventh grader, and I am concerned about the health, safety of children being mandated to wear masks all day long with restricted breathing. My oldest son, who is a junior, has asthma and has a hard time breathing with a mask. On the first day of school, he shows up to school with no mask because he's having a hard time breathing, and this is a violation of his rights. He is told to put a mask on. That is a school policy. He is asked again and refuses. Then offered information for online schooling, and is asked to leave the building. He now goes to Cleveland. This is not okay. We cannot be forcing kids to be wearing masks and restricting their breathing. Everyone says it's just easy to put a mask on. It is not easy for people to put masks on. You guys have not walked into the shoes of these people. Listen to some of these kids that are struggling with their breathing while putting a mask on at school. What are you guys going to do when a child passes out on school grounds? One size does not fit all. As Chairman Leonard had said at the last school board meeting, that it was his right to exercise his parental right to exercise his rights of what he was going to make his kids do. Why can't we have the same right? Again, masks needs to be parents' choice, and kids need to be able to breathe without having a restriction over their mouth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. All the next four up, we have Sarah Robinson, Lisa Walter, Levi Robb, and Emma Volk? Clushun? Schultz? Sorry. Jeremy?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't take what you guys have to deal with here lightly. Know that. I have some grace for that. It's just, at the end of wherever we're at on this, I hope we all are civil, for sure. All right. My name is Jeremy Gepper. I'm a St. Peter resident of 21 years. Live at 1102 Edgester Lane, just down the street here with my wife Gretchen. We have two children, ages eight and nine. They're at a private school this year, so we could exercise the choice whether we're going to mask them or not. I want to reference Minnesota Statute, Chapter 609, Section 735. I want to write that down, 609.735. "A person whose identity is concealed by the person in a public place by means of robe, mask, or other disguise unless based on religious beliefs or incidental to amusement, entertainment, protection from weather, or medical treatment is guilty of a misdemeanor." I'm reading the current state law, which may need to get changed if we're going to stay with masks. There we go. "The district's current policy requiring masks is forcing faculty, students, and visitors to break Minnesota law by concealing their identity with a mask that is not part of a medical treatment. The school board cannot practice medicine by prescribing a medical treatment such as a mask as you're not a licensed medical provider. I urge at least one of you to make a motion to immediately amend the district's mask policy to be an individual choice and end this overstep of authority and control of our children in the misfitting name of safety." Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Sarah?
Hello, my name is Sarah Robinson. I'm a resident family medicine physician over in Mankato. Thank you for allowing us all to speak today. Everyone here today can agree on two things. Number one, we want to protect our children, and number two, we're all tired of the pandemic. But the pandemic is still very much present. In fact, it was just reported tonight that Minnesota has reached its highest peak of individuals hospitalized for COVID today at 757 patients, including 230 patients in the ICU, which is the most since December. Our hospitals have been hovering around 92% to 95% capacity, meaning that we frequently do not have enough beds, not only for those with COVID, but others who are trying to use the hospital for their individual needs. A couple of weeks ago, I was doing emergency room shifts, and we had to call eight different hospitals before we could finally find a hospital to take a patient, and it was 90 miles away. COVID is still here. As much as we all want to get back to normal, we cannot get back to normal just by ignoring it. A frequent question I get asked is, "How long can we expect it to last?" It's already cost us all so much. It's cost us friends, family, games, dances, concerts, graduations, weddings, all the things that we thought that we never had to take for granted, but it's something we all want back in our lives. I don't have the exact answer, but I know that it'll be shorter if we are proactive and focused on preventing further spread of the virus. In order to both protect our children and to bring about an end to the pandemic, I strongly advocate for mandatory mask requirements at all grade levels. The level of COVID cases in our community is rising, so do not meet the previously agreed-upon requirements to lift the mask mandate. Masks allow for continued protection for a group of people that cannot be vaccinated or are under vaccinated. Also, masking would better ensure that children can stay at school. If we say that they can be unmasked or be masked, then it cuts down on mandatory quarantines. So you might not be able to see half of someone's face, but you can still engage and talk and play, all these things that are just so vital to our development and our humanity. Mandatory masks also teach an important lesson that sometimes we have to do what we don't want to do for the sake of the public good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. Lisa?
Hi, I have two kids at St. Peter School here, one at the high school and one at the middle school. I have a letter from my son's physician stating that he has been struggling with breathing, has headaches, and is not able to read or function as he should in school. The letter also stated he should possibly try a face shield and see if that works for him. I brought this letter to school today and told them that he would not be wearing a mask per his physician's letter and recommendation. The school, then, when he got home from school, I apologize, I'm not going to stay on track if I don't read this. I brought the letter to school today and told the nurse that he had tried a face shield over the summer and over this weekend and had a headache from having the face shield push on his forehead. She said she'd notify his teachers and recommend trying one that sits on his neck. So a face shield is just going to push, it doesn't sit on your face. It just sits here and pushes your breath up. So I wonder how effective that was. I left him at school thinking that he would have a good day. I came home to find out he was given a face shield to wear and came home with a headache. They never called me to tell me that he was being given a face shield or that he would be wearing one. They just pulled him out of class and made him wear it after he got it from the nurse. I looked online. First, I'm upset that they didn't follow the recommendation. We tried the face shield, and it did not work. I know he's not the only one that gets the headaches or has trouble breathing because when I walked in, someone at the school said, "Was that hard to get? Because I have headaches every single day. Why can I not get a letter from my doctor?" The CDC does not recommend substituting face shields for masks. I'm going to, again, come to school tomorrow and tell them that he does not to wear a mask per his physician's recommendation or a face shield. And if that is not granted, he has been directed to call me, and I will remove him from school. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Levi, can you? Levi, we're going to get the mic here for you.
Hi, my name is Levi. I go to school at North Elementary. I do not like masking because it can't, I can't hear all my friends. I can't speak with it covering my mouth. It gets wet, and when I grasp, I can't breathe when I'm running, and it gives me headaches. And in the middle of class, the teacher has to stop and say, "Put your mask on."
Thank you, Levi. Jenny?
You guys hear me? Okay, my name is Jenny, and I am Levi's mom. One thing that I wanted to point out was, talking to Levi's teacher when we first started school, she let us know that she is hearing impaired and that these masks, she can't read her students' lips. And then she has to ask them repeatedly to repeat themselves. By the third or fourth time, they're over it. So she's not able to do her job, and they're not able to learn. That's a big problem for me. Face shields, again, as Lisa said, not recommended. And these kids, the way that they talk, they'll be spattered full of stuff. So I'm just wondering where we're going with these. Okay? Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Emma, and the next group, Beverly Phillips? Emma, and the next group, Beverly Pillars, Lexi Wentworth, Andrea Fashas, and Joanne Genoway. Emma?
Hi, my name is Emma Volk Clushel and I am an eighth grader at the St. Peter Middle School. Last year was my first year in a public school. I've met so many new people here and look forward to school and socializing. What I don't look forward to doing is wearing a mask. Every single morning, I have to open this box to get a disposable mask to wear to school. There is a warning label on this box of masks that specifically states that this mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any virus, disease, or infection. I may only be 13 years old and don't have a PhD yet, but I can read. Why am I being forced to wear a mask when even the warning label says it doesn't eliminate my risk of catching a virus? I was diagnosed with exercise-induced asthma when I was 11 years old. Wearing a mask makes me feel like I can't breathe, gives me daily headaches, and sometimes makes me lightheaded. I believe that I'm more likely to be injured or hospitalized from wearing a mask all day than I am from catching COVID at school. My entire life outside of school is mask-free and it has been since day one. I also believe that wearing a mask interferes with my ability to learn. When I, when I wear my mask correctly, I'm constantly focusing on feeling like I can't breathe. When I pull my mask down or take it off, I'm constantly told to be, for it to be put back on. Today, I tried keeping track of how many times me or my peers were told to put our masks up. It was between 10 and 20 times each class. That's 20 times in one block. That's my teachers had to stop class to remind me to put my mask up. Teachers are allowed to take two steps back and take their masks down to teach, but I am not allowed to take two steps back and take my mask down. I have the right to an education and I have a right to breathe freely. My parents and I should be able to choose what is safe for me and my body. It is my opinion that forcing me to wear a mask is abuse and takes away from my education. Please reconsider the mask mandate for K through 12 students. I have friends all over Minnesota that aren't required to wear masks in school. Please give me the right to choose. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Emma. Beverly?
Good evening, my name is Beverly Pillars.
Yeah, let's tip it up.
My name is Beverly Pillars and I just wanted to encourage you to stay the course on your present policy that you adopted last month of wearing masks. In my daughter's first grade class, there's a little sign on the blockboard that says, be responsible, have grit, and be respectful. And I just hope that you have the grit to stay the course. The numbers aren't that good in order to relax the policy yet. I know that we're all under a lot of stress as parents and the kids in the schools, the teachers, and yourselves making the big decisions. And I, it, it falls on your shoulders. And as to, I heard in the last, in the previous meeting that there was some debate within your own personal views that you didn't want to mandate and tell somebody what to do. But, but also, when kids enter school, there's certain requirements and vaccines. There's a school policy that you approved last month in a handbook as to dress code. There's lots of requirements that are made on students and I'm afraid, let's take it on the school bus, some of those decisions are made by the school board and by the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Lexi?
Good evening, I'm Lexi Wentworth and I'm a sophomore at St. Peter High School. And tonight, I'm here to ask for the right to choose to wear a mask or not. Here are some reasons why. Most of us students are not wearing masks when we're together at sporting events, going to the malls, and/or hanging out for long periods of time together. We are normally going places together in cars, usually unmasked. So I asked, why can't I have the choice to wear one or not wear one at school? Thank you for giving me this time to speak. Good evening.
Thank you, Lexi. Also, I just wanted to state for the record that I think you have the coolest T-shirt here. Andrea?
Good evening, Superintendent Grant, Southland Board members. School boards have an obligation to develop policies which make sense for the local district. You heard here tonight how our neighbors, neighboring districts are employing mask choice or a mask recommendation rather than a mask mandate. But here we are, last month, we'd made the decision to go with universal, one-size-fits-all masking policy. To do this in perpetuity is an easy decision to make, but the pandemic is not going away. We have had little discussion about the impact on individual student achievement. What I'm talking about here are the young ones especially, and of course, we all want, we share the goal of keeping the kids in the classroom. Some facts that haven't been discussed here before by this board, at least not in my recollection, is that for those under 18, there is little to no risk of dying or hospitalization in COVID-19. Masks are filters, they are not barriers. The most efficient N95 masks have the ability to filter particles to .3 microns. The COVID virus is .1 micron, making COVID unfilterable by even the N95. Masking is ineffective for stopping these airborne particulates. As Director Soderlin, or former Director Soderlin pointed out last meeting, the masks are theater. They make us feel good, but they do not stop the pandemic. Parents are supposed to be partners in education with the, with the schools for their children. Minnesota statutes grant us the right as parents to review invasive medical treatments, and without a doubt, masks are invasive. Mask cleanliness is neither monitored nor tested. With licenses threatened for misinformation, medical providers will not provide medical mask exemptions even to the most at risk. Educators are here to educate, not spend precious student contact hours playing mask monitor. While the CDC, MDH, and Admin, SPEA, and other alphabetical soup organizations may make recommendations, they are just that, recommendations. What's converted to policy should make sense for St. Peter and their students' achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Joanne is next, and then Kim Beecher?
Good evening, I'm Joanne Genoway. I'm a resident of St. Peter. I'm a physician in Mankato. I have patients, friends, family, and loved ones in the St. Peter School District. As we've heard, and as I know you've been given information via email, Delta variant is different from Alpha variant. A lot of the information you've been hearing about today was from Alpha variant, which was not as deadly, did not affect kids as much as the Delta variant does. I was at the last school board meeting and I agree with the recommendations that were made there, especially with the parameters in place to monitor our local situation and make sure that we're masking appropriate to that. Masks are one layer of the protection that we can offer our students in our community. The vaccine is another layer. None of these layers are 100% effective, but masks are very helpful. I've worked in the clinics since the start of the pandemic and I have not gotten COVID, thank God. But I do know people that have gotten it. I have patients that are high school students that are dealing with long COVID, eight months after having contracted the virus, still having symptoms. The vaccine is great at preventing hospitalization and serious infection, but it's not 100% effective, especially with Delta variant, at preventing getting any infection and preventing long COVID symptoms. We could be seeing, we don't know because it's a new virus, but we could be seeing people having lifelong effects from getting COVID-19. And I would hate to have our high school students have lifelong effects from this virus when we can prevent it with vaccines and masks as a couple layers of prevention. So I urge you to continue the decision that you have made at the last meeting and keep our mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, hold your applause. Kim?
I also wanted to have some things.
Absolutely.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Dr. Kimberly Beecher, a family physician who's lived and worked here for 21 years. I have two sons in the district and I'm here today with mixed emotions. I attended last month's board meeting and was content with the decision to require masks until certain criteria were met. There is no solution that will satisfy everyone, but that made sense to me. As you know, we have not met those criteria, but we're still here. Honestly, I'm angry that this issue is still being discussed. The board followed procedure, created and voted on this amendment, and are now still arguing. I am angry that masking wasn't even being done consistently in high school, resulting in my vaccinated son testing positive for COVID. Having said that, I'm thankful that the rest of our family has been vaccinated, so the rest of us didn't have to miss school or work. I am thankful that he has mostly recovered. He's not fully recovered. I'm burned out. Years ago, I realized that I care more about some of my patients' health than they do. I realized that although I am their doctor, they trust random people on Facebook, talking heads on news media, or the latest Twitter feed more than they trust me. There are some families locally that choose not to immunize their kids, which is not the end of the world because of herd immunity. Unfortunately, 26% of my eligible patients have chosen not to vaccinate against COVID despite rampant spread, overwhelmed hospital systems, and the uncertainty of long-term symptoms after infection. Right now, I have a dozen patients who are experiencing symptoms, some of them for almost a year. We have nothing that we can do to help these people. None of them had the option to be vaccinated when they got it. Finally, the last 18 months have shown me that there is a large segment of our society with little compassion or empathy for other people. It saddens me that so many people only look at their preferences or care only about themselves. Our high school kids have younger brothers and sisters, elderly grandparents, parents with health conditions, all of which place them at increased risk. Unmasking them increases the risk for everyone else. Our principals have asked for universal masking so we can keep kids in schools. We, as a community, should take care of each other. The board must protect all of us. Continue the current mask requirement until August, conditions are met. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, hold your applause. I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. I want to thank everyone who chose to spend their evening with us. We'll move into board discussion at this point. I just want to prep the initial conversation with, you know, we talked about this at some length last month, a couple hours. We do not have markedly different numbers, although they're trending worse. The district has no recommended change in policy. We have an action item tonight because multiple board members asked for it and that's completely within their right. I asked that if a motion is made, and whoever decides to make a motion can make it however they like, but I really want people to keep in mind that a start date no sooner than Tuesday, which is tomorrow, because we have communication, we've got signage, we've got web changes that need to be done. So any decision that we make that's effective tomorrow impacts a lot of staff and a lot of parents. And so sometimes I forget about those kinds of details before motions are made and just wanted to, to preface the conversation with that. And I would remind the board that the action item as written indicated a possible change for high school masking requirements. But given that, if anyone does have a motion, I would also say that any successful motion tonight needs four votes. A tie does not move that motion forward and we have six members present. So it would need to be a four-two vote to, to be enacted. I mean, that's the rules.
So are you asking for a motion at this point?
I just am inquiring if there is one.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move to recommend in masking for pre-K to 12, which will be in line with approximately 80% of other schools throughout the state of Minnesota.
So you're jumping ahead. The, the action item for tonight said a possible amendment for grade 912, but you are calling for?
Pre-K 12.
Pre-K through 12.
Based on information that I look at with, like Brown County's numbers are lower than ours are and the fact that there's other counties and other school districts that have the recommendation and their numbers are not anywhere soft than ours.
Okay, do you have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second to that motion? Superintendent, help me out. How many times do I ask for a second? Three times. Do we have a, a second for that motion?
I'll, I'll make a second.
Vicki Hager seconds that motion. All right, further discussion. Vicki, we start with you.
Well, it, to me, the numbers are totally split. I mean, it really has divided our community and I, and I feel really bad for that. But as myself, I have asthma and I have a hard time trying to keep this mask off. And so, and I'm, I would really, I think that parents know the best for their kids and that's, that's the only reason I'm going that way.
Thank you, Drew.
Okay. Yeah, I do have some points. So first off, more of a procedural, not procedural, but just a point for the board that I think will speak to us, not so much to the public, but might make sense to us. We have put a motion, last board meeting, we put a motion forward, we debated it, and the board made a decision. So I think it's important that we do what we say we're going to do. And if we accepted a, an amendment tonight, we definitely would not be doing what we said we were going to do. Part of what we decided was that the community transmission rate would be moderate or low and that we wouldn't have multiple cases within the buildings themselves. That's what we decided to do. I think it's in the best interest of the board, the community, the students, the staff, that they can depend on us to do what we said we're going to do. So that's, that's just for us. And to be, you know, to point out, we have not met the requirements that we put out for ourselves to make a change or even to, you know, revisit the policy. So to that point, the decision-making part of this, like I said, we haven't met our own criteria that we set out before. We approved those criteria. We do not have an administrative recommendation for a change of our current policy. The superintendent is not recommending a change. Our administrative team is not recommending a change. We do not have a change in guidance from the federal or state entities or bodies that we look to to provide guidance for us. So I think we need to consider it very closely when we decide to make a unilateral move like this if we're going to vote against the recommendation of our administrative team. I think that's a big deal. By and large, making an adjustment right now is just too early. We don't have information that indicates that things are getting better on the virus front or the COVID front or the pandemic front. So why would we consider a change now? What would be driving the change right now for, for us?
Us?
I think only it is a-
That the masks don't work?
Please let the board discuss.
I think what we're facing is a voice of dissent in the community. And that's fine, but I don't believe that's a valid reason for a change in our policy. So lastly, we talk about student safety, which is, I think, ultimately what we're really getting at here and talking about. We know education is our number one goal here on the board. And I, I know that's all of our goal, I mean, I, I know you people, and we, and I- I mean, I know you people, and that is the case. And so I think the safety and the security of our students and staff is an absolute priority for getting education done in our district. I think that's been the case for a long time. That has not changed. No one to date, you know, during the entire pandemic, has provided any evidence, I think, to us, or to me, or any of us, that giving the students an option to wear a mask will make them safer, or make the building safer. There's no evidence to say that not wearing masks is going to make everyone safer. It will only potentially go the opposite direction, and I'm not comfortable with that. There was a point of requirements, making requirements, mandating things, to a point we heard earlier, that happens all of the time. All of our policies are requirements and mandates. We have a policy committee to go over those things. We do it on the regular. We have mouthguards for football. That's a requirement. Eye protection when we're welding or working in a wood shop, that's a requirement. These are things done out of safety, student safety, safety for our staff. You know, we can't have weapons or guns in the schools. We require school attendance. So in the name of safety, I think mandating masks is just another requirement of that same cloth. So just real quick. I was reading through our MSBA journal. Lovely reading. But something did stand out to me from Kirk Schneiderwin. The MSBA is an organization out there that advocates for Minnesota school boards across the entire state, and they help educate us to make us better board members. They will act on our behalf at the legislature. They do a lot of good for all of us. And they know that it's a contentious time right now, and the boards are having a difficult time dealing with a lot of this stuff, and as you can understand. So just some wisdom I thought was important and fell on my ears. So his suggestion here is gather when we're making decisions. Gather as much information as possible, prioritize staff and student safety, make informed decisions, and accept the fact that your decisions will be judged, even when these decisions are anchored in your school district's mission. So yes, our time's contentious, yes. Do we have to make hard choices? Yes. Will they be judged? Yes. Bottom line, masking helps to keep our kids safe, is one element. With the masks in place, quarantines are going to be reduced, and it will keep kids in the buildings. I think that's important. Masking keeps our activities going. Without quarantines, volleyball gets to play, football, track, musicals, arts, all get to go. So please listen to the expert advice that we have with our local physicians, the Minnesota resources, and the federal resources available to us, who offer their guidance that we should listen to.
Thank you, Clark Dixon. Judge R. Kausa?
Yeah. Again, I want to thank everybody who has emailed, who spoke here tonight. I really appreciate all the feedback I'm getting, all the information I'm getting, the links to click on, the podcasts to listen to, the videos to watch. I'm trying to get as informed as I possibly can about this issue. Dr. Soderland, I don't know why he chose to resign. I didn't, we just exchanged texts back and forth, and we didn't get into detail. But he is the 66th board member to resign this year. None of us got into this to try to be doctors, try to be, you know, for the politics of it. We got into it for the learning of, for the kids. That's what we were focused on. And this, what we're having to deal with, we'll do it, but this, we came because we cared about kids and cared about their learning. And I think it's gotten so focused on one subject that I can't wait for the day, for the day when we finally get back to just talking about how do we get our English scores up? How do we get a third grader to read at third grade level? I mean, everybody only gets one shot at third grade, you know? And we want to make sure that they get the best education they can, and one shot at sixth grade. And that's why we all joined this board, was for that. I realize that there's tough decisions like this that need to be made. Last, what I always try to figure out is where's, is there any middle ground? Because it didn't seem like there was any by the emails I was getting. And I kind of searched for a compromise at the last meeting. I was trying to figure out, what is that middle ground? Well, the problem was is that I should have come up with that compromise earlier. There are questions that need to be answered. I had someone come up right after the board meeting and go, you know, I can't believe you put a number of cases in a building when all the buildings have different numbers of people in them. I think that it should be a percentage. I think on the way up, I think where high risk is, I think that that's a good number because it is a trigger of what's coming. I don't know if I believe that when the numbers start to go down. I think it could be a higher spot. I think that, you know, and I do want to say a couple of things. I do, none of us are doing this for optics or reelection. That's not why we're making this decision. You could vote on this issue, but I can tell you, when we get a chance to talk about education, everybody's heart is in the right spot on this entire board. I would really like to have a better idea of what the metrics should be for when it's good to go back. For me, with the numbers as high as they are right now, if this meeting was two weeks from now, I might have a different idea. But I can't, in a good conscience, while the numbers continue to climb, to get to where we were discussing distance learning last year at the same numbers. You know, I just, and with the Delta variant being so much more contagious. And I went down a long trek in my reading and everything on masking and the effectiveness of it, and how you can find studies that say that even not N95 masks have protection, and some people say the opposite. I've visited with people, I've visited with health professionals, and the one thing that I kind of got to at the end is that not everything that's coming out of my mouth is coming out the other side of this mask. There is, there is protection in that. Is it perfect? Probably not. But if I'm doing it and somebody else is doing it, it's like two layers of protection at some level. You can't tell me that, it's why we cover our mouth when we cough, you know, so that it doesn't...
Please. Please. Please, please stop. We had public comment, we had public comments, sir.
You breathe in bad air.
Sir. Sir, we are going to speak amongst ourselves. This is the board discussion portion of the meeting.
So I guess my thing is, I need, I think we need to figure out what those numbers should be at. I know 5% was talked about in some of the documents I read, as far as a threshold of when a school building gets to 5%, that's when the mask should go back on. I know the high risk in the CDC, where their recommendations are at. And I just, I don't think, I'm a college coach who cares about education. I don't think it's my job, when people put their whole lives on public health and public, that's their profession, to try to keep people safe. It's what they do, it's the only reason why they do it, that I should go against what their recommendations are. And I just, when the numbers start coming down, I want to know when we can take them off. I want Mr. Gronsa to have a metric to know exactly when it's time, when it's safe to unmask. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Remember, Stewie?
Can I defer to Member Locustard for now, while I collect my thoughts?
Sure.
Sure, I'll go.
Thanks, Tim.
I guess a question for John. Are you asking them to change the motion that's on the table? Are you...
No, I was just speaking to, if, once this motion is voted on, I would maybe offer a different motion just because of, I feel like a little bit was, especially the number for a building, it was a flawed idea on my part, that I proposed, actually.
All right. I think everybody in the whole room knows where I stand on mandating things. As, I didn't get on this board to mandate things, and yep, we create rules and policies that are based on making education in the physical atmosphere. This is an absolutely beautiful school, safer. I look at every community around us. I know we heard it tonight, they're all recommending in Mankato. They are mandating K through eight because, as we all know, children under 12 can't get vaccinated. Nine through 12 is a recommendation. I like that. I understand under 12 is not vaccinated, and they can't make that choice to get that extra layer of protection. But again, I have friends in New Ulm, and Belle Plaine, and Wasika, and Mankato, and I know what they're doing, and their numbers aren't astronomical going out of space, so I don't under, I have a hard time why they can't work here. That's where I'm at. I was able to spend a weekend with, you know, 16 local businessmen that, there was a lot of discussion regarding where we're at in the community. And there was a lot of them that said, you know, we like masks. And then there was a lot of them that said, we don't like masks, or we don't see a lot of masking when we're going in the grocery store, or when we're going in to other businesses. And so why do the kids have to put them on when I walk through Hy-Vee and I see 10%? It's where I'm at. I think the CDC is a recommendation, the MDH is a recommendation. They recommend that everybody wears masks. I think we need to recommend wearing masks. K through eight, I get that. Under 12, I get it. I'm, I don't know that I'm ready to say K through 12, or pre-K through 12, all the way. I don't, I don't know. But nine through 12, they all have the opportunity to get the vaccine. There's vaccines all over. I mean, everybody has a chance to get the vaccine.
Thank you. Remember, Stewie?
All right. So I think I have my thoughts a little more organized, or at least I hope I do. First off, regardless of what happens tonight, I appreciate getting emails from people with their opinion on masking or not masking. I think whenever you write a public official, you should probably stay away from saying things like that they're uneducated, or that you don't care, because obviously that's not true. And you can say what you want about my education, I don't really care, but I just think you should try to keep it with what it involves. Now, as far as some other things that we're actually talking about with COVID, things that go through my mind. Okay, so I watched some NFL games yesterday. I think there's like, I don't know how many people in a stadium, but the CDC wasn't freaking out about all these people in the stadiums. Watched the Emmy Awards. They were outside with walls and a roof and totally enclosed. Again, the CDC did not freak out. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I look, like Tim said, like you look at Brown County numbers, I just pull them up, they're better than Nikla County, and they are not masking or quarantining, or they're kind of, I shouldn't say they aren't quarantining, they aren't enforcing that, or leaving that up to the families. The data, I hardly believe any data. I mean, I kind of almost believe a little bit of the CDC data, because even like when we had our presentation about, we're talking about the percentage of people vaccinated in Nikla County. Now, I'm guessing you got that information from Nikla County?
From the CDC.
From the CDC. Because on September 16th, you were saying these percentages of 60, high 60s, but Nikla County comes out with this big happy Facebook post that we're at 70%. So, and it's the same day. And so that's just frustrating for me, because I'm like, it has, there has to be a right answer there.
There are different categories within that, because they break it into age categories. The age category that was in the sheet is 12 and over. So that could have been...
But, yeah.
So, anyway.
Okay, well, it's still, it's like, that frustrates me too, because we should always look at the same information. We can't choose to do 12 and over, and then 16 and over, and then 18 and over, but whatever. I'm over all that. I want to know, according to Robert's Rules of Order, which, side note, we should have like a little, like, presentation or training on that, so we actually know. But if I wanted to amend my motion, can I do that before we vote?
Yes.
So I can choose to amend my motion to be, let's get this right here. Recommended masking for pre-K in grades nine through 12, required masking for grades K through eight, but that this will continue to be looked at, even though we all hate doing it, because I feel like we need to. Do you approve the amended motion?
Can you say that one more time?
Okay. Pre-K right now is recommended. We're going to keep that as recommended.
Okay. Yeah. My recommendation for this amended motion would be, the policy that we currently have, just state for the record, is mandatory masking K through 12.
Yep.
So that's what's in place.
Yep.
So you're offering an amendment to that policy that's in place? I think you only need to highlight...
I gotcha.
What you want changed. That should simplify it.
Okay. So then I will amend our current policy to say recommended masking for nine, 12 versus required.
She's amending the motion.
It's my motion, and I'm trying to amend it, I think. That's what I was trying to do. Can I ask you this? Can we vote on that, and then can somebody make another motion? Can we have several motions on the same item?
It's a different item.
Yep. You can vote on the first motion, and then make the second.
All right, then let's vote on the first motion.
So your first motion... So your first motion was move to recommended masking K-12, which would be, changing the mandated K-12.
Yes.
Move to recommended.
Yep.
Are you okay with that original second?
Well, when I look down these numbers-
We're going back to classic code.
Yeah, no, she's already seconded it.
Yeah, I did second it.
Okay.
They just gotta vote.
We have a motion. We have a motion.
Just gonna vote on this one.
Yep, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion fails.
Okay. Now can I make another motion or somebody else?
I can make a motion.
Tim, why don't you make a motion?
I move that we, I move that we keep, we just amend the current policy to recommended masking, recommended masking for nine through 12.
To start with?
To start with.
To start when?
I mean, what's reasonable?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow's fine, yeah.
So the motion is-
Wednesday if you want time.
Move to recommended masking at the high school, starting tomorrow.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? No, yeah, we, we, we've had our public comments session and, and actually- I, we have other medical professionals here that might make the same case. So I, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move ahead. We do have a motion and a second. Hearing none, further, board?
Oh yeah, I mean, I, again, I feel uncomfortable voting on a motion that is not being recommended by our administration. So I just, I want to put that out there.
Did your mic go out?
I don't know, did it? No.
No, it's still good.
I just had, I'm uncomfortable with the board taking on a motion and voting against the, the recommendations of our administrative team.
Chairperson Leonard, can I say something?
Yes.
My reason that I feel a little more confidently about the recommended for nine, 12 is that at that stage, everybody has the option to get vaccinated. And they could do it tomorrow at Hy-Vee or Walgreens or any way they want. So that takes out the worry of quarantining because in our current COVID protocols, we say that if vaccinated, even if you become in contact with somebody with COVID, you do not have to quarantine. So, everybody at the high school has the option to get vaccinated and that's why I feel very confidently in this motion that Tim brought up. That was just a really good idea.
What is our current vaccination rate? Do you know, the district?
I don't.
Are we asking? I didn't think we were even asking families.
I know that staff, we're at above the, between 85 and 90% of our staff is vaccinated. I do not have the, the student rate.
Yeah, to the point of, you know, people have the option of getting vaccine, that's true. People are continuing to get the vaccine. Right now, I think would be too early to, it would be too early of a call. From what I'm reading and seeing, you know, the talk of herd immunity, that's like 85% of the populace is vaccinated against some viral load. We aren't there. Maybe if we can get to that within our student body, that would be worth discussing at that point. But I, since our larger community is not at that point, I'm assuming here that our student body is at that point.
I'd like to say, when I look at, you know, I think it's page 89 or something like that, but on this outline that you did. And when I look at the different areas of the school districts that are recommending, and we are the only one on there that's requiring. I think that one just, and I think, I think you had said something about that too, Tim, that, that's just surprising to me. And I guess that's one of the reasons that, so if you were gonna recommend that they, they would, the ninth through 12th grade, I, I think that that would be at least a good starting point. And like somebody said, the vaccination for the younger ones are going to be coming out soon too. And there will need to be a span for that so that we see, you know, how many people are doing that and what the numbers are. But it's just looking at this picture that just really kind of hits me. I think recommendation, leaving it up to the parents. But I will second the second, or Tracy's one about the ninth through 12th grade.
Well, you're too late.
Oh.
Sorry, it was Tim's motion.
It was Tim's motion.
Okay.
And I seconded it, so.
Great, okay.
You can't second that.
We do have a motion with a second on the table. Superintendent Gronsa?
Yes, I did want to mention that, I, I think it was, it was said several times tonight here too, that vaccination has not necessarily stopped Delta. In fact, I think the three staff members that haven't, have COVID right now are all vaccinated, were vaccinated.
Not a vaccine, stop calling it a vaccine. It's not a vaccine.
I will not stop calling it a vaccine.
However, I do have, I do have a further question. You know, one of the things we talked about with these other regions, and I want to clarify in the motion, is these other communities are not requiring quarantines with close contact. And is the intent that we would continue with that or not continue with that? Because I think that would, that would affect our ability to, to move forward in person if we had large exposures.
Because they're recommending quarantine.
Right.
They're not requiring.
Yep.
Well, and we kind of talked about that on the phone a little bit this morning. We were talking about that and talking specifically about a district down the road.
The two of you.
Yes, the two of us. No, 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 just the him and I, because we like to talk to each other on the phone. It's one of his favorite things to do. And anyways, we were talking about that and I, and you had said, well, that they, that they weren't requiring the quarantining. And then we kind of talked that, I challenged a little bit on that in saying that the purpose of the quarantine is to prevent the community spread. But the numbers tell us that the community spread isn't there. So, I would say then that if we were to recommend the quarantine instead of requiring it, that we would have other districts that are doing it that have not seen large community spread.
The one tricky thing about school is it is a required activity, you know? And whereas if I, if someone decides to go to a football game or, you know, something, that, that is a choice that they get to make. We have truancy officers that require students to be in school. And it's our job to keep it as safe as we can. And I, I think that that's, that's, that's the tricky thing, you know, is to determine what is safe. Now, I don't want to take away a parent's choice where they're, they can make the choice and it's not going to affect others. But, and, so, they, everybody that has been at the high school has had ample time to make their decision about the vaccine and, and make their choices likewise. And so, but, you know, when, when there isn't that choice, when a building doesn't have those choices, I feel that, you know, that while I, I respect a parent's right, because everybody's required to be there, that we need to be very careful with our decision-making towards that.
But, I can't say that the other school districts are doing it correctly. It seems wildly inappropriate to say that a quarantine is recommended and like an option. That is a, I would, like a core tenet to public health, stopping the spread of the virus. And this, this one in particular. So, I, I don't, I still agree.
Okay. Okay, there's like, half the people here want one thing, half the other people want the other thing.
You want to see a five-year-old mask after an hour and a half of wearing it? And told me cannot change it from the teacher? You guys want to see that? You guys can look at it and tell me how sanitary it is.
It's no Drew up there.
Would you like to see it, Drew?
Okay. I'm gonna recess, five minutes. The chair is a voting member, the chair is a voting member of the board and if it's 3-3, it doesn't pass because there's no majority. You don't think so?
No.
It's a failed motion at that point. They're on the, they're on the website, on the, on your policies? Oh, sorry, I don't have my mic up. They should be on the website and pal, in policies? We're all here. Any further discussion? Hearing none? I will call the motion. I would like to do a roll call vote because otherwise we'll never sort this out. So, Member Hager?
Aye.
Clerk Dixon?
Nay.
Fisher Carlson?
Aye.
Leonard?
Nay.
Stewie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Loken's party?
Aye.
Motion carries. So as per the passed motion, we will move to recommended masking at the high school level, starting tomorrow. We will move on to our next action item. Consider approval of student representatives to the school board for 21, 22. I think Eva left.
She did.
But is Sky Gassman here tonight?
She also left.
Alright. Well, our two school board student representatives for 21, 22, are Sky Gassma, Gassman, excuse me, and Eva Croct? Would, would love a motion?
I move to approve the student representatives for the, to the school board for 2021, 22.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action item number three. Consider approval of superintendent goals for 21, 22.
Very exciting piece of documentation. This is the final draft of, of work that we all started together and then Ben and I worked to kind of tease out the details of this. The first being the referendum and budget planning. And so that, that is underway. And then after the referendum season, we would work on building that 10-year budget plan. Two would be to navigate COVID and its impacts on the district operations and learning, that we're following the legal requirements, continuously reviewing best practices and continue open communication with district stakeholders. Third goal is on the continuous improvement cycle. And I have to tell you, this is the one I'm most excited about. This is something that, you know, as- Uh, this is something that, you know, as educators, we, we really dive into, and we've started doing some walkthroughs and having conversations about continuous improvement. And it's been really exciting to actually talk about teaching and learning, um, and look forward to furthering this. So we're, we're continuing to work on supporting the development of site goals and site plans, and then continuing our curriculum review cycles. Um, something that we also included in that was ensuring curriculum is communicated with all stakeholders. So the intent would be that we would have some plan for including that on, on the websites and sharing that with families and the greater community. And then talking about, um, robust levels of internal and external community engagement, uh, being around in schools and in the community. And continuing our equity work, but also can, really reaching out to the full community and making sure all voices, um, have input into our processes and into our decision-making. And then creating clear pathways for community members to access information, you know, things like making improvements to the website. So that it's easy, easier to navigate and that, um, all the correct information is included on it. And then really delving into strategic planning. This is an area where COVID has taken over for many districts and haven't been able to do the kind of strategic planning that we have been able to do in the past. And so our hope is to really dive into this, um, and engage the community and the board and our faculty and our students in creating a three-to-five-year strategic plan that has an action plan, um, all spelled out. And of course, the board would be a key, key part of identifying the direction for that strategic plan.
Any questions?
I'll also be walking on water for part of the presentation.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number four. Consider the certification of preliminary twenty-twenty-one levy.
You grab a chair, I'll grab you a table. Oh, where did it go? They're on the other side. Just doing a little scene change. Yes, it is that time of year that we are working on, um, setting the preliminary amount for the levy. We do this every September. Keep in mind that there are thirty-six different streams within the levy. And, uh, Tim has put a lot of time and effort into working with the state as, as they share this information. And so, um, Mr. Regner is prepared to go through the preliminary levy with us.
Um, I think there's a couple pages or three pages in the handout there. The first of which is kind of just an outline on the, uh, levy. As you can see, the preliminary levy is about six million, six million three hundred ninety-three thousand four thirty-three. Last year, the levy was six million seven hundred ninety-seven thousand three eleven. That was the final amount that we ended up doing. The, uh, the levy is down to one hundred thousand dollars approximately this year. Um, and it's, it's kind of due to about two factors. One, um, one of which we've talked at at length, um, which is the referendum that's coming up. Right now, the referendum that we had expired, so it is not on. The, the way the levy works is they, I call it levy twenty-one, pay twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-three. So at the present time, we don't have any authority for fiscal year twenty-three for the operating referendum. So, the four hundred thousand dollars that that's down, that's approximately down three hundred nine thousand because the referendum is, or has expired for FY twenty-three. So that's not included, there's no referendum in there at all. Also, um, it's down about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars because, um, way before probably any of us may were here when they don't build the addition onto North, I think it was fifteen or twenty years ago. They did a lease levy for that, of which our last payment is fiscal year twenty-two or this year. So we levied for that last year, and the news is it basically will be paid off, so we don't have that hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment in fiscal year twenty-three, so it's not in the levy. Besides those two factors, this is probably the least uneventful levy since I've been here. There's, you know, some of the factors are up a little bit, some are down, but I think everything kind of balanced out. You're up thirty thousand, down, you know, down fifteen. You know, that's mainly to do with changes in enrollment, changes in property values. Um, and then the, um, as Superintendent Granza alluded to, there's, you know, there's, there's thirty-six, thirty-nine different streams of, of different levies. Um, I think the levy form is up to thirty-nine pages this year, and it's, every one of those has a different factor of aid and levy. Like, uh, I know each August, we talk about the LTFM levy. Um, the way the calculations came out this year, our revenue is gonna be approximately the same, but less is gonna come in levy and more in aid because of the way our enrollment and property values changed. And that, that's the main reason for a lot of the different components, and they, they pretty much even outsold the preliminary levy right now. The amount at six million three hundred ninety-three thousand four thirty-three is down, you know, just under six percent. And that's subject to the referendum levy, November referendum vote. Typically in September, and I think ninety-nine point, uh, something, pretty much everybody at the state, you certify the maximum levy. Because this is, this is the preliminary levy that sets the tax statements that go off, preliminary tax statements that go off, public taxpayers. Um, it's typically set at the maximum because something inherently changes a little bit with the state's calculations, it seems like. And if it does, if you do a cer, a certain amount of six million three hundred ninety-three thousand, you're locked into that. If you do the maximum, it could change a little bit depending upon calculations. Um, and I gotta say, this year, it's, it's, we, we, we had one change, our, in our stuff, we had one change in the numbers, so it's been pretty good. The state, they, it's, it's complicated, but they do, I gotta compliment the MBE, they do a pretty good job on getting the, the numbers out to us. But, um, I guess what we, we recommend, and we talked about these numbers at length, um, at the finance meeting, meeting last week, is to certify the maximum. And that's what we've done since we've been here. And then the final levy is set at the December meeting. Um, you know, at that time, you know the results of the operating referendum vote, and go from there. You know, if you look at page two, everything, you know, that, that's all the different levies and the different amounts and the changes over the last two or three years. Like I said, it, it's very consistent from last year, hardly any change at all, and besides those two, two items that identified. Um, page three is kind of interesting, it's, it's also, we just kind of keep a running total of the property values, um, for the, in the districts over the last, uh, you know, four or five years here. And then kind of the, the change from last year. Um, you know, the market value actually went down, and this is, um, calendar year two thousand twenty, they're not done with twenty-one yet. Um, you know, just, it's a complicated method up at the county. Um, you know, actually, the market value went down a little bit, and the referendum market value went up a little bit, which probably indicates, you know, I haven't checked with the county, that maybe the ag land or the seasonal properties dropped a little bit in value. Um, you know, the sales ratio, you know, that, that's really low for what the properties are assessed at, for what actually sells at. And that's because we are in a probably rising real estate market, and that, that's not a surprise to anybody that's, you know, tried to find a house in town, or the market's been, it's been very good in price, and the county is a little bit behind it in, in changing it. You know, that's why the adjusted net tax capacity is, is a little bit higher line for sixteen compared to like twelve. And again, there on the, line eighteen, it kind of shows where our levy's been over the last five or six years. You know, it's been pretty consistent, you know, a little bit of increase between seventeen and eighteen, but otherwise it's been fairly, fairly level, with, you know, some increases here and there. Some of that has to do with the bond payments that we have on the, on this building and a couple of the other ones. So I guess kind of our administrative recommendation is to certify the maximum levy for now, and then we can look at doing any adjustments in December, when we have just a little bit more information. And, um, at that time, right now, the, the levy would go down just under six percent, depending upon the, the vote and the number. So, um, I'll try to be a little brief here, I know we've, we've had a lot of stuff tonight, but, um, any questions for myself or Mr. Granza? Um, and Ben, and, um, you know, is that the meeting, the, uh, finance committee meeting too, so you can answer the questions?
I mean, I would still defer to you, but I was at the meeting.
Yeah, no, I just. I guess that, that's, that's what we're, we think the finance, our finance committee did recommend moving on.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, uh, certify the preliminary levy at the max allowable.
Second. We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of certifying the preliminary twenty-twenty-one levy at the maximum, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Tim, you're here for the next item too.
Yeah. Consider updating activity signer at Hometown Bank.
Whenever we, with, um, and actually, I think there, there, was there another one in there too, there? When people leave, like Jordan Paula was the signer down at the bank, and with him leaving and Shay Vortas replacing him, we have to go through the, the documentation down at the bank. And they just need to see that the governing body has approved that Shay can be on the checking account basically replacing, um, replacing Jordan left. And I think, I don't know if we got it available, we're gonna have Heather Cussler, and I apologize if I got the name wrong, replace Barb Berg on, in North, um, activity account too. Because Barb has retired and Heather has replaced her, and so they need the documentation on that one too.
So I, I heard something, it's, it's Hometown Bank, is it also First National?
Hometown Bank is the high school student activity account, and North is at First National.
Yep, so we would need both in the motion.
Right, we would need them separate.
I'll make a motion to update the bank signers at Hometown Bank and First National Bank for Shay Vortas and Heather Cussler. And I'm sorry if I'm saying Heather's name wrong.
Kussler.
Kussler, sorry.
I'll strike him.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider second slash final reading of revisions to the policy manual.
Yes, um, there are two policies that are coming before you for a second reading. One is policy six oh five on alternative programs, it does not have a corresponding policy, and it's pretty short, it's less than one page. Just kind of a description of what our alternative programs are. And then policy six oh eight, instructional services, special education, also, um, a, a very short policy, um, and replaces our current policy six point seven. I don't know if the policy board, committee number seven.
Member Hager, member Stewie.
These are second readings, and I don't think we heard anything back from people after the first reading, so.
Well, thank you for your work. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. To accept the policy. Oh, six oh five and six oh eight.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. To accept the policies, revisions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our final action item for the evening, which is in the middle of our agenda, but it is the final action item. Uh, consider approval of SRO duties and a business agreement and evaluation input form.
Yes, this, um, is the product of lots of teamwork, um, by myself and all of the principals. And we went through this line by line and worked on, um, creating this document. And then the, we met with the city as well, and the city administrator and the police chief, um, along with Officer Hughes, and went through it again. And so this is a work in progress. Uh, this is for you to review this, this information. What is new is a pretty thorough description of the role of an SRO in the schools. So that we both go into this agreement with really clear expectations, um, of what is expected. And what, what they do and don't have to do as an SRO. And the city council is also reviewing this tonight in a study session and looking at this language. And the thought is that you are planning for a joint meeting, uh, together, where, um, you can have further discussion about this. So this is really about accepting the language on our side, and this would not become activated until both entities agree to the language. We did bring this to the shared programs committee and had, um, some really good discussion around this as we worked, as we worked through it. And, um, the principals and I stand for any questions that you might have, um, about this.
I, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. Um, in looking, it looks like we are still, um, fifty percent is paid by the school and fifty percent is paid by the city, that has not changed.
Uh, they have increased the amount that is paid, um, because we are using more than fifty percent of, of their time. So I believe.
Maybe I'm just looking in the wrong place here.
Yeah, I think, I think it was redlined to be seventy, thirty.
And then for my own clarification, these are still, um, City of St. Peter Police Department employees, and they are just in the school resource officer as an assignment to them, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I have a comment. I'm very excited about this. We, um, we never have had a job description before, and so this is pretty laid out and pretty concrete, so I, I'm really excited about this.
I think it's great that the city has worked with the school district on this, uh, for really the first time, where they, where he'll be, we'll be able to evaluate that position together, rather than just one entity, so.
I do wanna say that, um, going back to the fifty, fifty percent.
Yeah.
I think the, the payment, um, is part of the discussion that we're gonna have to have when we get together with the city.
Okay. Cause am I looking right now, or are they saying that the school district agrees to pay the city of, um, seventy percent?
Right.
That's, but we're still in, uh, negotiation process possibly on that?
Yep.
I saw fifty percent down here, but that's just talking about when it's getting paid out.
Right.
Okay.
Two.
Two.
So this document will go through additional revisions when the city and the district get back together. So, it, there is an action item. So what are we, are we approving this document or?
Yes, and it would not become an agreement until after both organizations have agreed to the language. And then you're gonna have that joint meeting to enact it.
But you don't have any known changes. There, there's nothing in this document that this district is like, oh, we'll just, we'll change that later.
Right.
That's substantive, correct?
Right.
Well, other than the, how much we're paying, I mean, how do we, if we approve this and then, so we're approving the seventy percent then? Unless I'm not understanding what we, you know, cause that's what it says.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it should be seventy percent, I really don't know. I mean, right now it's fifty and it's going up to seventy, so I think that it would be a discussion at least to figure out.
And I, I think that, that piece of it was really at the request of the police department. Because we are using more of their time during the school year because they work more than a typical shift with the police department when they're with us in the schools. And so, um, what you could do is if you were making a motion, you could say, with the exception of the financial piece, to be further negotiated. Or you can just table it too. I have a feeling the financial piece is the one spot.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna make sure we're not approving something before we're really ready to approve it. I'm really not trying to cause problems.
No, 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 no. You're just trying not to be locked into.
Exactly, I hate being locked into stuff.
So if we may not move on this, if you have another question. Because we had, one of the things that was highlighted previously was the fact that it wasn't a, maybe, a, a well-balanced way to, like, for a performance review. And now that's included here. But I'm not sure who's involved with that performance review. I didn't see it laid out in the agreement. I may have missed it. What would the, who would the intended offer, offer, audience be?
Yeah, each of the principals would complete the evaluation and provide it to the police department to be included in their process of evaluating the program.
Okay.
May I ask another question?
Of course.
Um, not so much about this in particular, we're talking about SROs. Um, where are we at in getting, I know that right now we just have the one because of there was the staffing issue at the police department. So where are we at and have they given us any indication on when we might be getting that second one?
Yes, it was, um, the, there was a posting with the police department. We are doing, um, an interview on Wednesday.
Nice, thank you.
Uh, they are still in the process of finding more officers though, so there may be a delay in them becoming, um, filling that position.
And then, and I know we were at the Shared Programs Committee with the city, there was a little bit of discussion. We were talking about, you know, how, where they, where they would be located, right? I mean, before we had one pretty much at the high school and somebody at the middle school. And is that always the assignment it was gonna be or does that one officer follow that group up? I mean, so wonder, is that like, I mean, who's gonna work with, I said something, the principals? And, I mean, who's gonna be making those kind of decisions as to where that person will be housed?
Yeah, the administrative team will work with the SROs to, to make that decision.
I don't know what the right answer is with there, but I think there's advantages both ways.
Yep.
Did personnel get a chance to look at this before it came before the board?
Personnel did not because it's not our employee.
Right.
It went before shared programs.
Yep.
The district is recommending it.
So there could be a motion to accept the language with the exception of Article three B, which would be the finances to be negotiated.
I've lost my page, which page is it on again?
One, oh, five.
I mean, the, because there is the, it does say the percentage that we pay, but it is also tied to the number of hours per week. And if I'm looking at Article three, that's an A. So A and B correspond, right?
You could just, yeah, you could say Article two. Article two would be all of three. That sounds ridiculous, Article two is all of three.
So the city is reviewing this tonight as well? And so I'm trying to figure out, like, do we have to make a decision on this tonight? That's what I'm, I don't wanna hold anything up, but I'm also trying to figure out where we're at in the process.
No, you could finalize it after the, after your discussion if you want. That's fine.
No, I'm kinda trying to read facial expressions.
I think it's a great, great idea.
I do too.
Thank you guys for telling me I had a great idea.
It was awesome.
You're so welcome.
Thank you so much, all this positive energy.
You're sure it's fine, it wasn't the coolest one here tonight, but your idea is.
All right, back to being serious.
So you can table that.
So do we make a motion to table it then?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to table the SRO, um, business agreement evaluation input form just so we can finalize those last couple of things.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, I will call that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now move on to information items. Fundraising plans by site for the school year.
So exciting to announce our fundraising opportunities for the year. They are included and listed here by site. And the principals are here for your questions, should you have any, um, based on these.
I guess all I would ask is, is there anything new from last year? Just little head shakes or nods or, are you all awake down there?
At North, we tried, uh, first aid school supplies. This year is totally optional, um, families can decide on, or the police backpacking supplies is online.
Okay.
We have ones with the families participating, the bucks to act, go to our P D I S programming. So, um, our shining saints are, are, you know, awards that we give students.
Okay, cool.
Who's that through?
First aid school supplies.
Oh, that's the company.
That's kind of funny, that was funny.
Excellent, thank you. Move on to information item number two, report on student enrollment.
Here comes Mr. Rigner. While he's making his way up here, I'll share that the state typically takes the official count on October first. So we're, we're kind of in preliminary numbers here. Things are still working through the, the system of paperwork between districts and to the state. And so Tim is gonna share a little summary tonight just to give us a ballpark figure.
What we put in the, uh, before, was kind of this snapshot of, um, our Mars person, Krista, Krista Clark keeps us updated every week on the, the numbers. There's a few other numbers, you know, early childhood special education and, you know, Hoffman Center stuff that are not included here. We tried to just keep it fairly basic with the kids involved in the block, but those other ones get a little bit complicated and transfer out the stuff. This is, and this is the bulk of the, uh, the numbers here. Basically, the first rule, it's just we break it down to South North, middle school, high school, and the, and the Rock Bend, um, Alternative Learning Center. And the first line is basically the budget that, you know, we set the budget back in June, I guess it was. June or May for the year, kind of the numbers we had used at that time. And actually, the budget for this year was pretty much the same numbers last year with the house rolled off and most type of things. And then each week after school starts, we update the numbers. Um, and as Bill says, said, a lot of times, the numbers aren't real. They're, they're pretty fluid most of the year with people coming and going, but they're really fluid through October first. And the fact that, um, you know, people have left and have told us they left and we keep them on until we get notice or fifteen days. And then those, there's a bunch of rules and regulations we follow, there are Mars reporting for this. So it's, it's kind of fluid, but October she gets a little more stabilized after October. And then, you know, sometimes it adjusts a little bit after January too. But, um, this year we have seen a drop since the beginning of the year and we are below budget a little bit. And we tried to budget pretty conservatively, um, except possibly, you know, the kindergarten class, we went high because it was low last year with COVID. But if I make the numbers there, sort of, that, that's one of the reasons we're down about forty or fifty from, from budget at current time. So, um, like I said, it's still pretty fluid, kids are coming and going yet getting settled. So, but I just wanted to give you a, and one thing that did change this year, two of us, was Rock Bend, you know, over last year and this year with the two classes, which is now, you know, mainly juniors and seniors, so that's, um, so they're down there. But, um, that's kind of the numbers where they're at, just kind of wanted to give you a snapshot update, um, of where we are kind of in the middle of September.
And this, this is not conclusive of Hoffman or, uh, early childhood special education? Early childhood at special education is one of those areas that grows over the course of the year because we are identifying and adding students to that number. And so if you're, if you're thinking in your head that, you know, that twenty-two hundred number is where we're going, keep in mind that the number we're looking at does not have Hoffman or early childhood special education in it yet, correct?
Yep, and, and early childhood is, it's kind of, it's, that goes by hours and days there. So the student we don't get, this we tried to do is just the one student, um, like early child students. By the end of the year, we'd probably get up to, and if I'm wrong here, you know, eighty, ninety, a hundred students. We start out the year at, you know, forty to fifty, somewhere in there, it grows. And then kind of, they, they, you know, it's a pro rate, it'll take how long they're there. So usually we end up about fifty pupil units, if that makes sense, so you could add fifty on to here. And then Hoffman Center, they're, they're not, they're not our students, um, they, they come from other school districts. So we get paid a different mechanism on that than the general formula, sixty, a hundred dollars a year. So we kind of leave them off there. And typically, there's been about thirty students out there, twenty-five to thirty. And that's a little bit different program in this year, so I think the numbers would be relatively the same. But those students are, are not colored, and there's also, um, we try to just keep it real basic, the K through twelve. So there are a few more students. And then we do have a few other ones that are tuitioned out that go to care and treatment programs somewhere in the state. Generally, we have probably twenty to thirty of those students too, which are, you know, that adjusts every year, but that's kind of a ballpark figure. So they're not included on this report. We, we can track them, but like I said, I just wanted to try to keep it a little simpler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, so, you know, you have the budget in the August thirtieth, November seventh, and November thirteenth. And, you know, I get the numbers move around and stuff, but did we really start August thirtieth with the hundred and forty-four kindergarteners and lose thirty-one already? Or is that just more of a?
One thing on the kindergarten, that's, um, they, I should, they.
Yeah, HK.
Yeah, HK and K are both kindergartners, they're just.
Ah, there's that thirty-one. I was wondering what Mrs. Alkey was doing down there, that if we dropped thirty kids in, you know? That makes me feel a little better, cause that was kind of.
That's an example of the paperwork catching up.
Yeah, so what's HK mean?
Handicapped kindergarten?
Oh, okay.
Which is a terrible name for it.
Yeah, it is.
And they really need to change that at the state level.
Wow.
But that's how they hold them and then.
Okay.
We try and keep them tracked so we know.
All right.
Thank you, any other questions? I will move on to the first reading of revisions to the policy manual. Do you wanna take this one, remember Stewie?
No. Honestly.
We worked through a number of policies in our last session and many of them have to do with transportation. Uh, we kept much of the language. So Policy seven oh seven, seven oh eight, we really didn't make any changes to that were substantial. And Policy seven oh nine, which was transportation safety, we did, um, retain our current language from, um, the disciplinary pieces of our policy. And so we've basically tricked in what they had and replaced it with our own language. And then there weren't any other changes that we were making that were substantial in seven oh nine or seven eleven. In seven twelve, that is, um, one area that we do want to do some more work and get some more input on. That is regarding video surveillance, um, other than buses. So that means in our buildings, wherever we have cameras. And so we wanna have some further discussion on that and get some more input on that from, from our admin team and from some, some other stakeholders before we bring that forward for a second reading. So that might be one that you wanna spend a little bit more time going through and providing us with some feedback on that.
Um, I have something to add slash ask, cause I had to leave early on this one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I know we talked a little bit about the extracurricular transportation. Has Mr. Vortas, has he looked at that and he's liking what their model policy said? Cause I see we're pretty much adopting their model policy, I know.
Yes, thank you for following up on that. I did reach out to Activities Director Vortas and he said, looks good.
Well, good, if Mr. Vortas likes it, then I like it.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, thanks Policy Committee for your continued work. Building principals, you wanna stay down there, you wanna come up here?
Or if you'd like to have to go upstairs.
Oh, you wanna get up and move around, don't you?
With parking.
I wouldn't like standing.
Yeah, that's great.
Do you want me to bring the mic down there here?
Pass the mic.
That's right.
All right, here you go.
Yep.
All right, so during this afternoon, we are in our third week. Um, as Mr. Grandseth reported earlier, we do have a classroom quarantine, um, due to positive COVID cases and the recommended basketball preschool. So hopefully we'll have our little ones back next week. We are working on getting our routines established and that's going well, busing and transportation and, um, just kids learning their routine, that's going well. We focus on safety this time of the year, so we have bus safety scheduled for next week. We've done some fire drills already, um, and we'll continue to have our focus on safety throughout the day. And then, um, looking ahead in our calendar, on October fourteenth, we'll be holding our first early childhood screening of the school year, so that we can get that rolling. And, and as we mentioned earlier, those numbers are down and early childhood screening is one of the, the, um, activities in which we get a number of referrals for, um, early childhood special education assessment. So that's our plan, October fourteenth.
All right, and at South Elementary, we too are falling into routine. I think we have our bus loop down to about half of the time that we did on that very first day, which is always a disaster. So, um, things are coming, it just, it is, you know, it's, you've got half the population learning how to do the loop for the first time. So we really are getting, getting very good at that. Um, a couple of new things that we have this year, one motion thing that I want to talk about is because last year we were the recipient of that fifty thousand dollar anonymous donation. Um, one of the things that we've done is we've created three imagination stations rooms. And these are three rooms that have new toys, uh, sets, re-motor activities and creation station type activities for students and all of our students K one with. students. And all of our students K one, with that really being a priority of recognizing the importance of play, all of our students kindergarten and first grade are rotating into those rooms every single day. So that's just one of those things that we felt like this year, especially with the social emotional needs of the students, we really needed to be focusing on that socialization and collaboration with their peers. Um, we did finish our FAST assessment. So this Friday, we have our first early release, and our own staff will be then making into that data. And we already know that there's going to be some holes that we need to be filling in, especially for our first graders and even our preschooler, or the students who came from preschool who didn't get that opportunity last year that they normally would have been given as a preschool experience. So we'll be looking as a staff at what do we need to be doing? And do we need to be looking at doing some class-wide interventions prior to doing those, um, smaller group interventions? So that, that will be our focus this week when we meet. Um, we'll also have our first Star Pride Assembly coming up on October first.
Thank you, Mrs. Zolki. Um, greetings from North Elementary School. Uh, the school year has gotten off to a really, really good start. Um, we, we, the transition time of parents and the kids and stuff is, is so smooth. Like, and some of the things, some of the silver lining, uh, I think of just being in a pandemic is rethinking the way we do business, like before and after school. And so, um, that flow of the parents and the kids going to building, the parents dropping off the buses, is just so smooth around North when a lot of that change came from last year. So we definitely want to thank the families for being tuned into that process and helping get the kids in the building. And that's what it's all about. Um, we had the premiere of our twenty-twenty-one Saint Center. Um, so that's a video, it's about a fifteen-minute video production that's put on every month, um, that our PBS team does. And this month was just, again, building a culture of learners at North. Um, and so it, um, spotlighted quite a few of Mrs. Nelson's, Mr. Lewis's, um, Mr. Hassing students out on the playground, saying what it takes to, you know, welcome kids to, to our building and some of their favorite things that are going on at the school building the first three weeks. Um, one of those big ones was the re, the introduction of the Kahaka Hall kid, which is also kind of a catch-22 because everybody loves it. Um, but they get some competitive juices going in there. So it lends itself to some, um, problem solving as well out there on the playground. But it's good. They, they love their additional, we increased recess time this year too. So they're definitely getting a lot of spending time going on out there. Um, and they really appreciate that. They need it. Um, also, we've, we've been really lucky, um, to add, um, that position of social worker time at North. It's not an additional, like, full FTE, but we share some time with early childhood. Um, and that's been huge with the SEL, Social Emotional Learning. All the social workers have already made it around to all the homerooms. Um, just kind of talking about, like, every month, they're going to be coming in, um, working with the students, um, putting in some social emotional learning. That has been huge to get the beginning of the year off to a good start. Uh, so thank you for putting some more of, uh, social worker support in school, I mean, at North and early childhood. And also, just one more, uh, a thankful piece. Um, every, every Thursday, um, one of our leadership team puts out just a questionnaire that's called Thankful Thursdays. Anything you're thankful for. Um, and the first one just came out again this last Thursday and then Friday morning. It's published to all the, all the people in the building. And it's so wonderful just to see, like, whatever, like, people supporting each other, thankful for each other, since there could be so many things going on right now that brings us, brings us down. So it's really great to see our students and staff supporting each other in that way.
It's also a great start. It's, uh, it's also a great start for our school. Um, very, very smooth transition back into the school year. Um, we have also kept, as Miss Rorcassey mentioned, several of the things that we moved through COVID. We've kept some of those this year. Um, one of the biggest is having four lunches. Uh, we've gone from having about two hundred and thirty kids per lunch to about a hundred and seventy. Um, and it's just made the whole day smooth. Uh, so the silver lining of the pandemic is a change of the, it's a really wonderful thing. And that's just a easy thing to do. Um, talking today with Mr. Alger, I'm very impressed with our eighth grade class. We have a really good leadership group, or a group that can lead, um, pairs off our own students. I noticed that very, very, very impressed with that. Um, this month, we're focusing on the P of Pride, which is preparedness advisory. Um, we're really focusing on that organizational aspect for students, uh, being really explicit and intentional in teaching kids Google skills. Uh, leaving down to just, maybe you send an email to a teacher, maybe you send an email to your student, that's what we're trying to do. Uh, and then lastly, it is homecoming week. Uh, we are just paying as much as we can, uh, trying to make that high school, uh, what we have left for days. We've got P J Day for dress up days. We've got cartoon character day, skirts day, and saints day. Those are always huge, huge for our school kids to be able to, you know, if they're dressed up in the saints day at school. Perhaps this is why.
All right. We've been off to a pretty good start with Rock Bend and Hoffman Learning Center as well. Um, if you recall, last year during, um, distance learning and hybrid learning, it was the first time that we had two full classrooms at M-Bend for Rock Bend ALC. And when we went all back in, um, we actually moved our classrooms to the community center for additional space. So, um, I wasn't quite sure how things would be having thirty students in those two M-Bend classrooms, but we've been, um, doing pretty well. It's tight in those classrooms. Um, we got some new furniture when we went over to the community center and then bringing that back. Um, it, it does fit in the room. It's tight, but things are going well. Um, we do have, we're pretty much maxed out on capacity at the ALC. We have about twenty-five students on our waitlist. So, um, we've been talking in the shared program and committee about more space. That would certainly be appreciated by the families and the kids that are on that list. Um, Ashwell Learning Academy also has some adjustments. That's the, the new name for Hoffman. Um, in space, we acquired that new wellness center. Um, we approved that lease at our last meeting. We've yet to get our classes in the classrooms. Furniture was just delivered last week. And we have whiteboards and tack boards coming at seven AM tomorrow. So we're excited about that. We've been prepping the kids and the teachers for the transition into that space. And we are, uh, looking forward to being in there. Um, in terms of teaching and learning, our instructors have just gotten right into the curriculum. We're excited about FAST testing, which is coming soon. Um, that hasn't been done at Rock Bend previously, but we're getting that rolling for those students. Um, and then despite our successful summer credit recovery program, we do still have needs for credit recovery. So we are right now working on staffing our credit recovery after-school program at the high school and hope to have that up and running after MEA and before second quarter.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Cora? I'm with your twenty-five kids that are on that waitlist.
Yep.
So where are the, are those twenty-five kids just hanging out still here at the high school? Are they doing online learning? Are they in another district or?
They're at the high school. There's a few that are from other districts.
Okay. Oh, that's true. Okay.
All right. I guess, oh, sorry. No. I guess that makes it my turn.
It is.
All right. Um, I wanted to say a special thank you to our Native American Parent Advisory Committee, who before tonight's meeting held an educational session for board members and administrators. And, uh, we learned a little bit more about Native American culture and the practice of smudging and had the opportunity to have some fry bread. And I can't remember the word. The apple sauce. I can't remember the word for it. How quickly I forget. Um, but it was just a great learning opportunity, and I'm thankful for their participation and having their voices at the table through our Native American Parent Advisory Council. As I, as the principals mentioned, it is homecoming week. So there's lots of excitement in our buildings and throughout the community for the, the big homecoming game on Friday evening at seven o'clock. And, um, I too wanted to, um, in the consent agenda, there were three graduates that were listed, and I just, um, wanted Ben to say their names.
Yes. Uh, Christian Miller, Tuya Pitts, and Braxton Honitschlager. That was some name, some handwriting.
I, I thought that was written pretty well.
It's, it's better than my writing, but.
But honestly, I just, I just wanted their names formally-
Absolutely.
-read into the record. So congratulations, um, to Christian, Tyun, and Braxton. Um, and I too wanted to mention again, just our focus on learning, on starting up our walkthroughs. And it feels really good to be talking about, ah, just any kind of instruction and learning and being in the classrooms and seeing all of that, um, education going on, seeing our kids in the classrooms, and really being able to focus on improving our craft as educators. And, uh, that, that is all I have for you this evening.
I have a question. How, how is the bus situation? I hear so many different communities that are having trouble hiring buses. I mean, have we seen anything like that? Or are the buses pretty good?
When I spoke to Lucas, uh, from Saints Bussing, they, they're doing okay.
Great.
And he said it like really quietly and knocked on wood when he said it. So-
We don't want to create anything else.
I know that's going to challenge all over the place.
That's right. Yeah. Oh, that's good to hear. Good to hear.
Excellent. Uh, board members around the table. Vice Chair Lopensberg. Member Stewie.
Well, it's hard to believe, but I think I said everything I need to say from today.
I, I wanted to thank Dr. Soderland for his service to the school board. Um, and again, certainly honor his decision, uh, to end his service to the school board, but really appreciated his insights and working with him. And, uh, I, I too lament the pandemic and that it wasn't the normal start to a, a school board career. And the school board doesn't really get to hang out a lot because we do our school board business in front of the public. Um, but there are some, uh, social occasions where we don't speak about the school board, and we really haven't had those. Uh, and I, I miss those. And, uh, but, you know, I think that, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's easy to say that Dr. Soderland, uh, will stay a huge supporter of this district, a huge supporter of students and staff and faculty. And so I'm sad that I won't be seated around the table with him, but know that that will continue. And I wanted to, uh, extend my appreciation. Also, I want to thank the administrators. These are really tough decisions, and we make these decisions, and then I go away for a couple of weeks. And you'll be in school tomorrow morning, uh, in like ten hours or whatever it is. Uh, and, you know, you'll have parents who might not understand these decisions and staff that might not understand these decisions. And you have to, uh, carry out, uh, the decisions that other people have made. And, uh, thank you very much, uh, admin team. I would put you up against, uh, any admin team in any district, not like an actual fight, but like, uh, a learn-off or something.
A learn-off.
And staff, I know we have staff, uh, that are in the audience too. I just, uh, I really appreciate what you do. And I know the last few years have not, uh, been as much fun as, as the other years. Um, but, but we will get back to that. So thank you. Judge Carlson.
I'm good. Nothing further.
I'm good.
We have, uh, we have completed our agenda for the evening. Uh, I will tell you about some upcoming meetings of the school board. We have a study session scheduled for Monday, October fourth at six-thirty in the St. Peter Middle School Media Center. Uh, we have a negotiations, uh, meeting Tuesday, October fifth, uh, at four-forty-five in the middle school conference room, and a policy review committee October twelfth at eight-thirty AM in the middle school conference room. Those are the upcoming meetings. And, yes.
Did you want to mention the possibility of additional study session?
Yeah, I talked about that in the beginning. I guess we could get a little bit of feedback here. Um, noticing that our next scheduled study session is for October fourth, which would be, uh, three business days after the thirtieth. Do we want to look towards that October fourth date? Superintendent, is that too late? Does that agenda not have space for us to talk about, uh, the process to appoint a new member?
Our plan for the October fourth study session would be our review of student achievement and talking about MCAs and FAST scores. And I think it depends how long you think it will take to talk through what that process might look like.
How much time would board members like dedicated to a process which is, um, I think flexible, um, but ultimately prescriptive on how that choice is voted on?
Personally, I would like to see us do it on the study board session on the thirtieth, even though I know it's a pain for us all to get together again, because I would really just like to talk on October fourth about student achievement and not have it get, have us get, like, emotionally drained from the one topic and then not have the energy for the fourth. But that's just my opinion, and I'm, I guess, one-sixth of the opinion at this point. So.
And I, I'm going to be out of the state, uh, on the fourth. So I won't be able to attend that one.
Okay. Well, that's enough for me to say, let's look at the thirtieth. And just to remind, uh, the public who, uh, fast forwarded to the end of the episode at home or is still in the audience tonight, uh, the thirtieth, uh, we will look to schedule, and October fifth, uh, those are, uh, study sessions. And we, uh, by law cannot pass agenda items during study sessions. So we would be taking no formal action-
Right.
-on, uh, those days. So people are still more than welcome to, to come, but I wouldn't want them to come with the expectation that we, we take action.
Well, okay. And two questions. What is it, six-thirty on the thirtieth? Or is that's normally when we do meetings?
Normally, it is six-thirty, yeah.
Okay. And then, just so I kind of know a little bit, we have, like, as a board now, we appoint somebody, correct? I know we'll talk more about this, but I'm going to get asked, and I want to know just a little bit. Like, we appoint someone, and we have, like, thirty days or something. I kind of try to look on MSBA website. Is that kind of the gist of it? And we'll talk more on the thirtieth?
So according to statute, you, you must fill a vacancy. The process for filling that vacancy is undefined in statute.
Oh, wonderful.
So you can, you can decide how you want to do that. However, uh, it has to be passed by resolution when the board decides to choose a candidate. And it has to pass by a majority vote. Following that resolution, you would then have a thirty-day waiting period where there's an opportunity for, um, if someone wanted to, um, challenge that appointment.
It's a pretty high threshold, but-
Yeah.
It is, it's a pretty high threshold to challenge, but there is that, it's like ability for the public to do that.
Five percent of the electorate.
So are we having, like, is the School Board Association going to kind of come step us through this process? Or is this something you feel comfortable and you know the ins and outs? Perfect. Okay.
And we have done it in this district in the past. Um, some of us on the board remember that. So.
I'll cross that off on my list of things to worry about.
Yep.
So Ben-
Bingo card is getting fuller.
Could you, could you list, uh, it was kind of confusing, when our next meetings are?
Our next meetings, we had talked about, uh, we have not officially scheduled it, but that we would schedule a study session-
Study session?
For six-thirty PM on September thirtieth, which I believe is a Thursday.
Okay.
And then, um, as listed on the agenda, um, the regularly scheduled study session to talk about learning for once, um, on October fourth at six-thirty. Negotiations, October fifth, four-forty-five, and policy, October twelfth, eight-thirty AM.
Right.
And our regular board meeting is October eighteen.
Am I jumping the gun if I make a motion to adjourn?
You are certainly not. No.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.